Call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer? Mrs. Lane?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press in the Kitman County Herald on January 6, 2018. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did we want to start with the year-end reports first and then move into the county presentation? Okay. So, we will start with public safety.
Year-end reports, Mrs. Scott, Court Administrator.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We were asked to give you reports for 2016 versus 2017 for the court. The filings have not really changed at all. One number, the criminal, was down 50. Motor vehicle was up by 68. So, it's basically the same amount of filings year to year. For 2018, we just hope to keep everything running smooth, as it is right now. Does anybody have any questions for me?
So, you're saying the criminal cases were down?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's a good thing.
Criminal is your borough ordinances, that's all of that type.
It was down by one number, is that what you're saying?
By 50.
By 50 percent or by 50?
No, 50 filings.
Okay.
I'm talking filings over.
Okay, okay. Do you have any number, like how many criminal complaints were filed in 2016 versus 2017, like a number?
And it's 50 less at this point.
So, that means it's...
Okay.
What is it, 100?
Right. Yeah, I'm just asking what was the total number each year?
172 for this year. And 2016 was 222.
Interesting, okay.
Some people learn.
That's more than just, it's not just the ordinance, minor infractions, that's everything.
That is everything criminal, indictables, disorderly persons offenses, and borough ordinances.
Well, that's a good thing.
Okay. Anything else?
And what were the other ones? You said the traffic was down by what?
Well, traffic was up.
Was up by how many?
We did, by 68. Cases added in 2017 were 1,350 versus 1,282 in 2016.
So, now, does that include DUIs?
That includes anything motor vehicle.
Anything motor vehicle. So, DUIs would be under that as opposed to the criminal?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. New Jersey DUIs are motor vehicle.
Okay.
And then parking's a whole other place?
No, parking is included in that.
Parking's included in that too?
Yep.
Overall, was parking up or down?
I would say it was down, definitely down. I can tell by the amount of tickets that come into my office because you have the program where you give a warning first before...
Right, yeah, I just mean summons is issued. The number of parking summons is issued was down from 2016 to 2017.
Yeah.
Anybody have anything?
Yeah.
Good. Okay, thank you, Debbie.
Chief Stanford?
Good afternoon.
All right, my report, year-end report for the fire department for 2017 versus 2016. In 2017, we had 269 fire calls. In 2016, we had 296 fire calls. It would appear we did less fire calls this year, but when you look at the statistics, previous year in '16, we had that blizzard in January. What was it?
Was that Jonas?
Jonas.
It was 2016.
When we were at the firehouse for four days, we did 40 calls for that one call. So, I would say our numbers are right on par for the previous year. Our EMS calls were 520 compared to 528 for the previous year. Some interesting statistics. Our building fires were slightly up by two. Our medical assists, which are assists on the beach for EMS calls, in '16 was 15 calls. In 2017 was 21, so that did go up. Interesting statistic, and I'd like to take credit for this with the Fire Bureau, was our fire alarms in 2016, 104, and in 2017 were 72, so they were down by 32 calls.
That's good.
I think we're finally seeing results of the fire inspections requiring alarm tests. And this year, we started really enforcing the 10-year rule, which means that fire, smoke detectors need to be replaced every 10 years. So, it's a manufactured regulation which we, in turn, adopted to enforce. So, a lot of the older detectors were being replaced, so that's a good thing. Our average firefighters per call went up from 16.7 to 18.5, which is a good thing. Our response times stayed the same at five minutes. Our EMS response time was 1.29 minutes.
Wow.
I know the stipends on the agenda for later this afternoon, but the stipend program is definitely working. We've had five new applications in the fire department, which is a good thing. They're all relatively local, and one does live in Stone Harbor, which is what we're trying to do, is get people in Stone Harbor. So, we're in good shape. Any questions?
Can we, can I change the process here a little bit? While we have Roger here and we have that stipend as a resolution and the council meeting to follow this meeting, can we just discuss that, the 2018 version of the stipend process? So, if there's any questions, he's here, he can answer them. I think the big, we voted to put that in effect a few months ago, and we've budgeted for it, for the increased cost. Remember, this was to get firemen to stay in the firehouse to cover the evenings and also the increased EMS stipend, and we've run it now for a couple of months. The only real amendment change to it that I could see is that now Roger is going, has the authority and will limit the amount of men and women that are signing up for that so we don't start spending too much money each month. So, he can control it better, and we'll just have on board what we need going forward. So, that's the big change. I don't know if any...
You want me to...
Is that the only change?
Yes, and the change was precipitated by a meeting that Jill and I had with the labor attorney to confirm that all the stipends meet the FLSA requirements. So, we met with Larry Pepper and his associate. He went over all of our stipends, and it was actually Larry that made the, well, it was more Larry and Jim Craft. Jim Craft was concerned that even though there's a certain number of shifts per month, without the limitation, you could have one EMS member who does 10 shifts a month, and you know, basically, it makes it a job. So, we limited the EMS to six shifts per month. One thing that the attorney, labor attorney wanted was for all of our EMS personnel to be firefighter certified. So, the other change was after the effective date, which is tonight, that any new members that we take had to have firefighter one and EMT, so they'll be dual certified. I think that was the only two changes, everything else remained the same.
Roger, so what you're saying is that the members that are already involved in the fire company don't have to be certified?
We have two divisions, one's a fire division and one's an EMS division. You could join EMS division and just run on the ambulance with only an EMT certification. After tonight, anybody that joins EMS division has to also be a firefighter. So, everybody's trained the same. It helps us out with our FLSA, with our, with the classifications of the personnel. It benefits us because the people that are over there will also be firefighters, so they'll be firefighters and EMTs. So, it's a good thing all around, but it will not, and we made that perfectly clear, will not affect the people that are there now that are currently just EMTs.
That's what I meant.
We are encouraging them to become firefighters, but they'll still be part of the organization and still be allowed to run. Anybody new would have to be firefighter.
So, you're grandfathering them?
Grandfathering them.
All right, thank you.
I think that's what that one line says prior to...
Do you find that most of the, are the EMTs mostly firefighters already?
We probably have five or six that aren't.
Okay.
And as I said, we're trying to get them to go to firefighter training, which is, you know, is a lot of training, but from this point on, we'll be taking just firefighters.
And what was the change? Didn't it was something, we either supported a change with training firefighters, you can do it, there's a way, at least it's...
It sort of has died in the legislature.
Oh, okay, okay.
We're allowing online firefighter one training, which was a great thing, but it's sort of...
It didn't get anywhere?
No.
Okay.
Going back to your report, I'd like to commend you and your whole team of EMS and so forth for their EMTs, for their response time. There are cities, there are towns who would die for that kind of, and do die because they don't have that kind of response time. So, good job.
Well, it's great having the people at the firehouse 24 hours, and also having a small jurisdiction to cover, but it's nice having an ambulance. Sometimes the ambulance is arriving with the police or before the police, and the mayor and I can tell you from being police officers in the past that sometimes we were on scene for a while waiting for the ambulance to arrive. So, it is a great thing to have them there quickly, so they take pride in that.
Always felt like forever when it wasn't.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything for Roger? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
So, do you need me to stay for the meeting, or is it...
I don't think so, no. Thank you. Chief Shoda?
Copy for you. Just came today. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
In review of 2017 and in comparison to 2016, I'm pleased to say that the incidents of reported crime from 2016 to 2017 are down. Excuse me. From a management perspective in comparing '17 and '16, the words that basically immediately come to my mind are transition and personnel. In 2017, we not only experienced a transition of leadership in the department, I myself, following the retirement of Chief Reynolds, but two other supervisors in the form of sergeants had retired as well, along with one patrol officer that left for another department. Naturally, the loss of four officers in one year not only left a void in personnel but in supervision because of the positions that they held. While I continue to thank Mayor Davies-DunHauer and the council for your support to replace the officers that left, generally speaking, the replacement of almost 25 percent of a police department in the same year with brand-new people is not an optimum situation. I think I lost a little more hair this year. When I met with our officers this time last year, I told them that the next year or two was not going to be easy due to the sheer number of officers that left in 2017. While officers were being replaced as quickly as they left, the need to send the new replacement officers to recruit training for six months at a time really put a strain on our abilities to effectively police, I think. I told our officers last January that I needed each and every one of them to step up in their own respective way and play a role in moving the department forward together until we had every officer back working on the road. And I am pleased to say the officers responded admirably and got the job done without official complaints. With my first year as police chief under our collective belt, the personnel concerns I had in 2017 are now in the rearview mirror because as of today, we will have three new sergeants sworn in, and as of tomorrow, we will have two new, our two officers that have been in recruit training for the past six months, they'll be working on the road. Our focus in 2018, of course, as always remains the protection of life and property, but with an emphasis on handling of incidents that are more of like a quality-of-life type issue that our residents have come to expect. Some of the quality-of-life type issues in 2018 where we'd like to improve upon are greater visibility on the beaches during the summer months, a more concentrated look at complaints of bicycles and skateboards in the business district, noise complaints as always, and the enforcement of ordinances relating to the issues brought about by the increase in residential construction. Once again, our primary motivation for 2018 is protection of life and property, but our improvement with the incidents that I just noted, those areas, will greatly continue to keep Stone Harbor the seashore at its best for our residents and visitors. In conclusion, I would be remiss if I did not mention that my other focus in 2018 will be the day-to-day management of operations while the construction of our new police building is undertaken. While possibly inconvenient at times for everyone, this is an exciting project that will increase our ability to more efficiently, effectively, and safely complete the mission of public safety that we are tasked with. As always, I thank Mayor Davies-DunHauer, the Public Safety Committee, and all members of council, as well as Mrs. Goutter, for your unwavering support, and we truly appreciate your efforts and look forward to working with you in 2018.
Thank you, Chief. So, do you have any questions for Chief Shoda?
Great job as usual.
Thank you.
And a great public speaker now.
It took me forever to write that.
You're doing fine.
It never gets easier coming up here.
Well, you look more relaxed.
Yes.
I'm dying inside a little bit every...
Karen, you can't see him dancing behind there.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Jill, where are we on the construction, the new building? Is that, are we moving ahead with that, or we're not? We are. Any start date yet?
We had a meeting last week.
Right.
And the demolition of the Sally Port and Squad Room is scheduled to be done sometime during the week of January 21st, next week.
Very good.
DPW's been fantastic since that meeting that we had last week. We had been preparing for several months now for this building, construction project, and we thankfully got ahead of the game a little bit where DPW, they immediately came in right after that meeting and they started to finalize basically the preparations for new offices downstairs that we had to move, that were going to have to move from the squad room, the current squad room, into where they will be relocated to. So, really, I mean, we're right there.
Did they talk about a finish date? Is it like spring of '19?
Spring of '19, thereabouts, yes, if all goes well.
It might be fun to know when the Sally Port really is going down. It might be worth watching.
Yeah, I don't know, have a specific date yet.
They said the 21st-ish.
It just said within the week of the 21st, right, right. So, yeah, that'll be historic, kind of.
And they're doing it.
And we've been taking pictures kind of throughout to memorialize the old building and, you know, what we, where we came from and where we're going to. So, it'll be interesting to see, you know, further down the road to put a little comparison up.
Yeah.
And some of the things that we found in preparing for this, we have plans to donate to the museum. Some of the stuff that we have is just, it's really, it's really interesting to see.
Oh, that's neat.
You'd have a real laugh at some of the stuff.
I'm sure.
So, you don't want us to come with hard hats and sledgehammers to take that Sally Port?
Let's do it all. I'll save it for everybody if you'd like.
Bring beer.
Quality-of-life type issue.
Anybody else, anything for the chief? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Captain Basaco doesn't appear to be here. I guess not much goes on the beach for the beach patrol in January. Would have been nice to have a '16, '17 comparison. We'll catch him next time, maybe. JT, OEM?
Excuse me. Well, what can I say, 2017 was a little bit better than '16. We did not have any real major events in '17, although it looked like we were going to have a lot of major events in '17. It was very active hurricane season, but it seemed like every time anything was coming towards us, it hooked out to sea, thankfully. I think 2018 is gonna, there's going to be some transitional stuff for me, mostly on administrative side with, we are now going to be using E-Teams, which is the state police program for OEM stuff exclusively with our situation reports and all of that type of stuff. They're not going to be communicating as much by email. Things are going to be done directly from me to the state without actually having to go through the county. It's a work in progress. We were to issue our first sitrep situation reports for the storm that we just had recently, and there were some issues there, but we're working with the county and the state to get them sorted out. So, hopefully, it'll make things more efficient. That's really it. We'll wait to see what the hurricane predictions are for 2018 when they come from National Hurricane Center, usually in the springtime, and we'll do the same thing that we did last year. We'll pass them on. We'll attend the Property Owners Association meeting and use our social media and all of that stuff to get those reports out. But so far, 2018's looking like it might be a little crazy too with weather, so the storm we had recently. But no major flooding with the event. Borough did a great job, had everything cleaned up fairly quickly based on the amount of snow. I think the official snowfall for Courthouse was 17 inches with that storm, so was kind of strange here because I had no snow in my front yard but six feet of snow in my side yard. So, it was kind of an odd situation with all of the wind. I do have some stuff, if you would like me to give my report as well to pass to council from the county.
Carry on.
The county meeting I attended on the 21st was a pretty extensive meeting, again, with the E-Teams, a lot of that discussion. Also, now, the state would like the municipalities to start registering any large-scale events with the state through E-Teams. They're currently defining a large-scale event as anything over 1,000 persons. So, we usually have several events that meet that criteria a year, and I spoke with Marty Palugi, fireworks, craft show, things of that nature. Road races, things that we have like that, don't necessarily need to be registered. Sail into December, sail into September, excuse me, would probably be something we would want to register. There's a lot of concern, and they're receiving a lot of intelligence concerning, obviously, and I hate to use the term, but terrorist attacks with vehicle-borne type situations. I think we all saw what happened in New York recently, where people now are just taking cars and ramming them into crowds. We've already actually gotten ahead of the game, and we've been proactive with this, with doing things to secure our beaches, the beach walkovers and things like that. There's concerns for the boardwalks, but I did bring up that beaches too are, you know, can be targets. So, I did let them know that we are already taking steps to secure our beaches. The state will provide manpower to come down and provide analytics of the types of situation we have, ways that we can properly secure it. They have troopers that, that's all they do. So, once we register any large-scale events with, through E-Teams and through the state police, we can request that they send troopers down and take a look at what we have and just offer up suggestions on ways to secure, you know, these events, just to make people feel...
How do you differentiate? Like, in this town, it's almost like every July and August is an event in and of itself.
That's correct.
So, it has to be a formal, like...
Yes, I think, and also was brought up that the county prosecutor's office, they do have barricades. So, just, I think, simple things that we can do to be proactive where we do block off 96th Street when we have sail into September, maybe put jersey barriers behind those things just to make these, make people feel safe, and heaven forbid there is some type of event that we're prepared for it. But there was a lot of questions about that. What do we register and what do we not register? And I think the general feeling is large gatherings of people, large gatherings.
And how does the county know what, is it skipping the county or is the county included in the notification when you notify the state?
It would go, it would be put into E-Teams and it would go through county up to the state. Anything that gets put in there has to be approved, whatever it is, by the county level, so the county would be made aware.
Okay, so it really doesn't go, it's straight to the state?
No.
It goes through the county to the state, but it's all going to the state as well?
That is correct.
Okay.
And they are now asking that we do that. That's, I think the incident that came up was on the boardwalk where they had the bombing several years ago. There were other large-scale events that were occurring at the time, and the state didn't know about them. And in the event that you have the, a situation where you have more than one event that are going to go off simultaneously, the state would just like to know where there are large groups of people. That was really their reasoning behind it. And when they had the incident, I believe it was on the boardwalk up in Belmar, I believe it was, Seaside Park, somewhere up in the northern part of the state several years ago, the state was very concerned because, well, where else are we having events right now that we need to let people know that this happened and to secure their events? So, that was really their reasoning behind it, so...
So, the county, the county's in that chain of command, but they've been taken out of the, when you first started making that presentation, you said that the sit reps now go right to the state?
No, the sit, same thing, it goes through, it goes to the county through E-Teams. The sit reps used to be done on a piece of paper, and then I would fax them over to the county. It was kind of an antiquated way of doing things. The state is basically, they want to be able to look at everything that's going on, whether they're concerned with it on a state level or not. They just would like to be able to go in and see, okay, let's see how Stone Harbor's handling the blizzard that's occurring right now. And very easily, they could go in and read the sit reps, situation reports, and just trying to centralize all of the information. It's just allowing more people to see it and see what's going on. Let's see here. There is talk about, well, I believe they are going to do it, the CERT team, the citizens' emergency response teams are talking, or the community emergency response teams are talking about reactivating that, or I believe Mr. Carusi was real into that, and there were some other people who have since retired or are no longer involved. They are talking about, you know, rejuvenating this program. I'm not sure how much of a need we have for it, but I know, I do think we probably would have volunteers that would want to be involved in it. They're going to be reaching out in the next month or two to look for volunteers that are interested in doing that program. Again, I'm not sure how much interest we'll have, but we will put it out to our residents if it's something that they're interested in doing.
JT, once you have been cert certified, does that continue?
I don't know. I believe it does. I don't, I don't really know how involved the program is, but I know there's not a lot to becoming certified, so I would imagine that people who were previously certified would most likely not have to go back through training. I don't know. I would have to check with Marty on that. But I do know we had people here before that were certified and that did get involved in it, so...
Years ago.
Yeah, they are talking about, you know, trying to get life back into that program in the county.
I mean, and it's not a short class.
Which would lend me to think that they wouldn't want to make people go back through it, so... The Jonas grant has been approved. Our residents have been notified. I believe, right now, all of the primary properties are going to participate in the program, so that's a good thing. We are continuing to mitigate these low, you know, homes that sit low and that flood a lot. Still haven't heard anything about the 2017 grant, probably won't hear anything for quite some time. But the Jonas application has been approved, and those homeowners who applied for it have been notified. And I believe that's all that I have.
No questions? Thanks, JT.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes public safety.
Public safety, do you want to go on to Beach and Recreation from here? Okay. So, you...
Miranda?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hello, Miranda.
Happy New Year.
And the same to you.
It's January. Can't believe we're already planning for summer, so here we go. Our 2016 versus 2017 report will start with recreation. I feel like we've grown our recreational offerings for residents and visitors in Stone Harbor exponentially. Pretty excited that all the hard work in the first years as I started are now coming to fruition, so first, very excited about the two synthetic turf bocce courts and how they improved downtown 97th Street facilities. We're able to host both a men's and women's bocce league this summer, which I think was pretty successful and very excited about it, and continuing possibly working in conjunction with Avalon to do something Seven Mile Island-wide, maybe with Avalon, and doing a bit of a rotation. So, I'm in talks with Avalon Recreation Director and see if we can get something going. Also, you know, just adding the more youth classes to expand everybody's, you know, the kiddo's horizons, adding the cooking classes and a multi-sports camp was very successful, and both are returning and have plans to return in 2018. And now that construction is complete for our pickleball and tennis facilities, they weren't complete and ready to play on until the second week of June of 2016. So, then, once we saw how one year operated, then in 2017, we were able to play on the tournaments for both sports, and we were able to expose about 250-plus people to our town and demonstrate, which, of course, Chief stole my thunder, and demonstrate why it's the seashore at its best in Stone Harbor. But the tagline, you know, holds true and will hold true forever that this is a wonderful town, so, from a tourism standpoint... From a tourism standpoint and just analyzing both years, we had successfully changed the layout and handsome features to the Stone Harbor Arts and Crafts Festival in twenty sixteen, so with the success of that, we were able to increase the marketing efforts towards that event to appeal to both artisans to display their work and then visitors to attend it, so we'll just continue on that, that wagon and get it going in the right direction. And then the Borough and the Chamber also invested in a partnership with the Cape May County Tourism Department with a travel show cooperative, so we initially planned for it in twenty second, in twenty sixteen and then executed it in twenty seventeen, which I won't steal the thunder, but we have the tourism director for Cape May County here that will present more on that and elaborate on the success of that endeavor. So to highlight just some of my priorities for twenty eighteen, first and foremost, host a successful mayor's wellness campaign which kicks off in a couple weeks. Complete the construction of our bicycle rest station and bicycle lanes from Eightieth to One Twenty Three, so hopefully spring of twenty sixteen we will start that construction once we get all our ducks in a row. Solidify the design of the area at Eighty Second Street that the bicycle rest station will not be utilizing for that portion that we're not utilizing what, you know, what we're purpose that for, what makes the most sense. And as Chief Shutter also talked about with transition years and just graduating, some of my, you know, staff members that have been with me for a long time, transitioning into another year and filling the shoes that they are leaving behind, so just getting our staffing in order. And then continue to grow the Stone Harbor Arts and Crafts Festival, which is now going on its fifty-sixth year, and then finally complete the construction on the support building at the Eighty Second Street Pickleball and Tennis Facility to finalize phase two. And that wraps up my priorities in a nutshell.
Anybody have anything from Miranda?
Questions? Anything I need to elaborate on? Okay.
Good job, as always.
Thank you.
Do you want to move into the marketing tourism grant at this point from Diane Whelan?
Do you have to leave? Okay, that's fine.
Is she here?
Yep.
Oh, there she is. I thought I saw you come in.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have an article for you, Miranda, to give to you. So this is Diane Whelan and she is the Director of the Cape May County Tourism Department, still called the Tourism Department, correct? That has not changed.
Tourism and Public Information.
Tourism and Public Information.
Every year a new department.
Yeah, you get more work. And we asked Diane to come to present to full council what exactly this marketing grant is, what it does, and how do you gauge success, and was it successful in twenty seventeen? And if so, how do you gauge it, and so on and so forth? So, that being said, and in the interest of full disclosure, she's my sister-in-law, so, so take it away.
Okay, um, thank you for inviting me and have a great opportunity to kind of tell you what we do in our county tourism department. I've been doing this for forty-three years, uh, as working in tourism all those years. One of the things that we work with is, it's called a, a, a destination marketing organization. We have the Southern Shore Destination Marketing Organization that allows us to, well, we apply for cooperative marketing grants that allow us to extend the marketing for all of our municipalities, and we have Atlantic, we have Cumberland and Cape May County that are part of it. Every year we apply, every year the Southern Shore gets the highest amount of funding. Last year we got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's a two-year grant, so we'll get it again next year. None of the other, there are seventeen DMOs in the state, nobody gets the amount of money that we have. So we're very successful, and why are we successful? Because we just have, you know, a great destination that makes it very easy for us to promote and showcase through, through, uh, to the state. One of the things, but as attachment to that is the cooperative marketing grant, there was a little snafu this year in our marketing grants. In Cape May County, there were ten, thirteen grants that were applied for, three were funded, ten were not, seven of the ten were repeat grants that should have been awarded, so I didn't take that too easily. I went back, we are now in a process of having them reevaluated, you know, how do seven seasoned grant writers not only get an amount that was reduced, but get nothing? So they're reevaluating and we're hoping that those marketing grants will also come back to Cape May County. Total, and I know Stone Harbor is part of it, we're, we're about to lose a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in marketing grants. Where does the money come from? Occupancy tax. Who generates the most occupancy tax? Cape May County. So we're just looking at, you know, we need to get back some of what we gave. Some of the ways that I measure the success of what we do in Cape May County is by the monthly occupancy tax collection. Right now they have up until September is available at the New Jersey Treasury. Cape May County over six, twenty sixteen, we're up three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Now that's just five percent of the room tax. No other county is up anywhere near that, many of the counties were kind of flat or have lost revenue because twenty seventeen wasn't really for everybody a great year. But for occupancy in Cape May County, we were successful. The only month that Cape May County did not increase occupancy tax collection was last March, March twenty seventeen. I have to think it was weather related and Easter, and there's a lot of things that go into, you know, determining, you know, how much money we're going to generate. One thing that we need to keep in, in mind is that toe, so far in twenty seventeen up to where the September month, Cape May County collected over ten million dollars and sent to the state. Ten million eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars went to the state from occupancy tax. Occupancy tax, of course, is the only charge for staying overnight at hotels, motels and B and Bs. The average person in Cape May County, if they stay overnight, are spending three hundred and seventy-four dollars, so we need to take a look at the numbers. You know, there's a lot of money being spent for overnight stays, so that all turns into revenue for the various supporting industries, shopping, dining, and attractions and activities. So this is all part of, you know, the overall, what Cape May County is generating. Based on this occupancy tax, I can, I anticipate that Cape May County will be up in overall spending, we'll know that in March when the state numbers are in. Last year, twenty sixteen, we were up five percent. We're at a six point three billion dollars in twenty sixteen. I anticipate probably a two, two and a half percent increase in twenty seventeen based on the numbers that we have here, and I think that we're going to see, continue to speed on the rise. We have never, since they started taking this data with the state since nineteen ninety-four, ever lost revenue or stayed flat. We continue to grow, we, in nineteen ninety-four, the revenue collective for Cape May County was two billion dollars. Twenty-plus years later, we're at six billion dollars. So, you know, tourism is important for all of us, and certainly the state looks down, you know, and see, to look at what we're doing and see how that is adding to the revenue. When you take a look at twenty-one counties, the four beach counties generate fifty-one percent of all the revenue, the other seventeen generate the rest, so that kind of just gives you the perspective of how it goes. The Travel Show Cooperative is something that we are working to get partners. We used to use grant dollars as well as the County Department of Tourism would foot the bill for a lot of these shows. We started working about four years ago to try to get all of our municipalities involved. It became difficult, not only for the cost for the county, but also to man the booth. And we are at twelve shows this year. Right now we're at Cincinnati, which is a ten-day show. Thursday we're leaving for Connecticut for a five-day show. We tried to reach out throughout the mid-Atlantic region. Cincinnati is the furthest we go, and we are seeing growth in that market. We, we bring our partners together to talk about what's the impact and what are you seeing? What are the trends? And, and how do we better market beyond the three hundred mile radius because the further the person drives, the longer they're going to stay, and that's kind of what we're, we're all looking for. So we're, we're using that, our third year now in Cincinnati, that's the furthest we go. We go to Canada, we'll be doing that at the end of February. The Canadian exchange rate is now up to seventy-nine percent, it was down to sixty-four in January of sixteen, so we're seeing that, you know, their dollar is gaining, you know, gaining strength in the, in the exchange rate, so now they're going to lose twenty-one cents on every dollar rather than, you know, almost forty cents on every dollar. So we're going to see an increase in Canadian visitors, and once again, they know the area, they stay in the campgrounds primarily, but now we're talking about second, third generation Canadians, they started coming in nineteen sixty-eight. They don't want to camp, they want to be in the hotels, they want to be, they understand, you know, the rentals, they understand, you know, the importance of being on the islands, and we're seeing their impact from Ocean City to Cape May. Used to be they're campers, you know, we don't see them, but they have to eat, they go to the beach and they also shop in our shops, so Canadians are huge shoppers because in Canada they pay about fourteen percent goods and service tax on their clothing. They pay it on their electric, they pay it on their gas, they pay it on their rent, but that's how you get socialized medicine, but, you know, so they do shop here because there's no tax. You know, believe me, when we go to travel shows and talk to them, that's a very important factor for them, so, you know, we don't, you know, you may not see them in all the stores, but we do know that they're coming here and they are shopping, and they're not the Walmart shoppers, they want to go into this clothing stores and, and get items that are high value. So we, so after we're done with the Canadian show, we're, we were going to be, we're going to do some triple A shows, we're going to be at the Philadelphia Flower Show. Last year they sold three hundred and sixty-two thousand tickets to the Philadelphia Flower Show. We have a booth there, it's the most expensive booth, but it's absolutely worth it. If we can just give one piece of literature to each person through that door, but it's usually more than we have really been able to meet our, our goals. They, the Philadelphia Flower Show brings visitors from all of our key markets, and if you sit there and you watch the buses come in from Pennsylvania, New York, Delaware, even Virginia, they're our customer, so we're just sitting there and they're picking up literature. It's ten days, it's busy every day, and it's a ten thousand dollar show, but we find that it is well worth it. Our biggest hurdle is getting people to man the booth, they're ten-hour days, so, you know, we've got teams that are back and forth going up to Philadelphia. We don't stay overnight because it's close enough to get a team, go up there, do a shift, come back. You know, it's a lot of logistics on our end, but definitely worth it. Last year over seven hundred thousand pieces of literature were distributed, and that's everybody's combined. We have partners that come together from the county. The Cape May County Department of Tourism is about a twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar partner. If we spend, you know, we have our budget, if we're not generating enough money, the tourism department annies up. Like it used to cost me forty-seven thousand, so I have twenty-five thousand, that's really earmarked for that. We also use our staff for the most part to send them out to do the shows, and that way their salaries are part of county tourism payroll, so it doesn't cost additional dollars for the cooperative. We have our Southern Shore DMO, which is a ten thousand dollar partner. That's the level that we have, three tiers, ten thousand, five thousand, and twenty-five hundred. For ten, you get to do all the shows, for five, you can pick half the shows, or if you want to do something, one like just the Flower Show, it's twenty-five, but we break it down so you, whatever the affordability is, we can make sure that you're, you get to pick where you want to be and you can be part of the Travel Show Cooperative. City of Cape May is a ten thousand dollar partner, the Wildwoods is a ten thousand dollar partner, Avalon is a ten thousand dollar partner, Sea Isle City just upped this year to be a ten thousand dollar partner, Ocean City is a five thousand dollar partner, but then they supply us with saltwater taffy and bags, so they kind of up the, you know, their, their investment by adding that. The County Chamber of Commerce is a five thousand dollar partner, but they are also allowing, giving us the manpower and their vehicle to go to the different travel shows. Right now we have three going on this week, so we kind of always have to have somehow a vehicle and people to man the booth. Last year you were a twenty-five hundred dollar and the Chamber partnered to be twenty-five, so you were at five thousand dollars. Anything that, you know, brochures or anything that you want to take, we're happy to take them. If you want to target any one area or you want to target, you know, your summer, your fall, whatever, you know, whatever you want, our literature's there, it's on the table. We have bags that we give to people with literature in them. I can tell you, the Flower Show is certainly a big Stone Harbor, people from, we're asking a lot of information about Stone Harbor. We're in Harrisburg and they ask about Stone Harbor, so, you know, we try to visit as many areas, Pittsburgh, Harrisburg, you know, the western Pennsylvania. We're in DC next week to do a show at the Convention Center in Washington DC, so, you know, there are a lot of areas that we try to, to attend so we can get our information out in that, we, we look at the three hundred mile or a tank of gas away to drive to this destination. We don't have any airport, so, you know, it's a drive-to destination, and then we try to pinpoint going outwards. This year I have a contract with the Press of Atlantic City who is expanding their digital marketing and we're going to geo-target certain shows, so we'll be, they'll be at the Flower Show geo-targeting any one of those two hundred and sixty-three thousand people who are coming to the show, if they have a smartphone, it, our information will go onto their smartphone if they're in the Convention Center to stop by at our booth and pick up information on Cape May County, so we're doing that also in Harrisburg and we'll be doing that, and we're doing it in Cincinnati right now. So that's kind of the, how we market it, to make sure that people in those areas know that we're there. We buy into magazines and newspapers, radio buys and all to tell people, you know, come to the show, and, and that way we can piggyback on the show promoters' buys and let them know that, you know, Cape May County's in the house and we have literature, you know, and if, all you have to do is stop by. Now, a lot of people are concerned that, you know, print is no longer a viable option. Seven hundred thousand pieces of literature was picked up, people still do like to hear it, to pick it up and see it in their hands and make their, their plans. They also, we can see a flurry of activity after the shows that they're on our website because we can track that through Google Analytics and we can also track it through the phone. Our annual public, our annual survey has indicated that baby boomers are still our key visitor, and baby boomers want their information in print. They also like the, the internet, but they like to pick it up in print, so my theory is you give people the information the way they want to receive it. So if we're going to assume right away that everyone's getting it by the internet or in a website, we asked that question, our survey, and that's not necessarily so, but we're going to continue to move in that direction because we know that's what's, what's happening. So that's our Travel Show Cooperative. We are working with the Greater Wildwood Chamber to bring together a seminar with Roger Brooks. We've talked about Roger Brooks, he's coming back May eighth.
Years ago.
Yes.
Six to be exact.
Yes. So Roger Brooks is a well-known destination international marketer, he's, he's, you know, all over, we finally got him to come this year because he's trying to cut back on his visits, but it'll be a day and a half through the DMO and the tourism office, we're paying for him, it's a twelve thousand dollar speaking fee, yeah, he's, he's in Arizona right now, and he has to come in, but that's a solid amount, and he, there'll be, one of his seminars will be two thirty to five on May eighth, one of his seminars and breakout will be improving our downtown, which is something that we're all, you know, working hard to do, so we, I encourage, it's free because we're paying for it, it's free, we'll send a notice out, but these are what, as partners that we're working with, is to make sure that if we can get partnerships to help pay for the travel shows, more dollars can go to help bring, you know, people in to help us and guide us to, you know, more of the state-of-the-art marketing. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't want, I don't want to keep you, but I have two questions. Where is the seminar held on May?
It'll be at the Wildwood Convention Center.
Okay.
They coordinated that space for us for the whole day.
The second question is, are, do you accept volunteers for the Flower Show to man the booths?
Yes, we do.
And did you think of tapping into the garden clubs?
Uh, we have contacted the garden club in the past, Karen, you know, with brochures, you've given us some brochures in the past to take, but yes, if we can get some names, we'll be putting it out there to our partners to help us. We, we pay for your lunch, and we try not to make it, if it's a ten or twelve hour show, you work half of it, you know, the morning or the afternoon, sometimes there's a little overlap.
And you get in free?
You get a ticket, yes.
So I think you'd have volunteers from the garden clubs?
Well.
Avalon, Stone Harbor, Sea Isle?
We will reach out, because who knows better, you know, about the area than, you know, the folks that live here, and they're definitely looking, you know, transportation is sometimes an issue and parking, but, you know, you'll get your ticket, you'll get lunch, so there is free lunch and you have to work, and we're promoting everybody, and we want to make sure that, you know, when we're doing this, that, you know, it's the entire county as a destination.
Do you have the date for that?
Excuse me?
First week of March.
First week of March, thank you.
Always.
The Flower Show is March third to the eleventh.
Do you have any way of tracking the success of this, the tourism, the brochure? Do you have any way of tracking the success of this, the tourism, the brochures you hand out? Do you have any way of tracking as to how many people actually come here, how Stone Harbor benefits?
Well, the, the, the difficulty that we have in tracking is that people will pick up the, the brochure and then may, make a phone call. We, we look at the flurry of activity after shows. If, when we're in Pittsburgh, we know because our phone and email and our website is, is, you know, shows us that more and more people are, are going online when we look at the, you know, the heat map of where the activity is. So we see that. In return for the exact hell, you know, what is the return on investment? We bring all of our partners together and we ask for them to bring their information. You know, if you can just give us an idea of zip codes of people who have actually made reservations and, you know, gone to your establishment, that helps us decide. It also helps us open new markets. You know, you know, when we started seeing more people from Ohio, you know, we're looking, okay, you know, maybe this is someplace we need to go that will extend the overnight stays. So that's how we measure it. Um, we look at occupancy tax as it continues to grow, which shows more people are coming. Um, we do our surveys to look, you know, how did you hear about us? And, you know, shows, uh, travel shows are, uh, an option they can check. What I find is really interesting is how many people say they saw our ad on TV and we don't advertise on TV.
That's not good.
No. So you gotta kind of take it all with a grain of salt. What I look at is occupancy tax, has that increased? Is the economic, economic impact, when we continue to grow and we're a six billion dollar industry, you know, is that, that's an indicator that more people are coming and they're staying, or they're staying longer.
Can you, most of the surround, I'm sorry, most of the surrounding, I wrote my questions down while you were speaking. Most of the surrounding communities are participating, like all the Wildwoods, Sea Isle, Avalon?
Beach resort is now. We're pretty happy about that. They are. And, and they're continuing to come, they, they see the value. And, you know, often, you, you, you want to make the brochure, whether it's a rec card or what, put something in people's hands so it will jog their memory. And, and you might find if you go to the Flower Show, you know, there's always, people want to talk about a great experience or something that they've had in the area and, you know, talk about their vacation. So it's very positive and you get to understand a little bit more of how important, you know, people may take one vacation a year and if it's in Cape May County, it's a great memory for them. And if we can move them around, which is what we do with, you know, add a campaign as a radio campaign, move people around and highlight events and attractions throughout the summer, you know, it's a matter of people aren't sitting and staying in their one town. They are definitely moving around.
Diane, as you know, I sat at the table last year when you made your presentation and I wholeheartedly and without reservation voted yes. However, this year, when we were asked to consider it again, we received no analytics. What we wanted were direct numbers to be able to gauge. Now, not that the, that we've moved from two billion to six billion dollars in revenue. I understand that fully. I mean, as a result of the travel shows, how did Stone Harbor benefit? And we received nothing like that.
We don't, we have a very difficult time to track something like that because we're not asking specifically. We would ask our businesses to, you know, measure, are they getting more people? Um, often, I mean, we could take credit for everybody that walks down Ninety-sixth Street. We can't. You know, because we know there are other people marketing. But what we look at is the, the response to people coming to our booth. The number of literature, amount of brochures that we distribute, and then we take a look at overall, you know, how that is. So we don't have individually because it would be difficult for us to measure that.
I understand that there was something like coupons that were in some of the brochures or the booklets. And, um, what I wanted to know was how many of those coupons came back and were redeemed? So that we know that these were not throwaways.
And what's difficult is that if someone comes to the show and they're at the show in February and they're taking their vacation in August, the chances of them bringing that coupon are kind of slim. People aren't really taking that with them. You know, we used to give out maps, but they don't bring them with them either, so we give them all to the, to the chambers to give out the maps, the street maps that people can move. We, it's very difficult to be able to measure through a coupon because people don't often bring them with them. You know, that might trigger them to think they're going to make a savings. Unless it's, you know, point of purchase, they're making the reservation and they say, I have a fifteen percent off coupon. And they can do it right there where they make the reservation, you know, that would be a good way to measure. But other than that, it makes it very difficult. And you can ask them, did you get a coupon? Yes. Did you use it? They don't know. It's just difficult. That's a hard, um, way to measure. And the metrics aren't really in place for that.
Well, some kind of analytical, um, report would be able, would make it able for us to, uh, justify to taxpayers why we would participate in something like this. That was my only concern.
And that, and that, it's difficult to do, but we have such a, a multi-level marketing campaign that we don't know what triggered someone to come. You know, this is just part of that whole process, that whole marketing plan. And the travel shows are a big part of it and, um, you know, but we don't know that, that is exactly what triggered people. But we just feel that it's giving people, you know, it's putting you in front of them while they're might be planning to make their vacation decisions. So, uh, we can try, you know, through, uh, surveys and things like that, but it is difficult because of the overall multi-level plan that we have, marketing plan that we have.
This might sound like a silly question, but when you talked about the Philadelphia Flower Show and you mentioned ten thousand dollars, are you saying that's what it costs for you to go to that and do what?
To be able to have.
Just sit there and hand things out?
Yep.
Holy cow.
And that's a, we were able to, we were getting it for eighty-five hundred dollars because the guy who was the show promoter, his parents live in Cape May Point, so we, we were able to parlay a relationship to get that. Now there's a new show promoter. And this is the, um, Pennsylvania Horticulture Society's biggest fundraiser. So now we got them for a contract, if we signed a contract for three years, we would only have to pay ten thousand. Normally it's thirteen.
For three years?
Signed up for three years.
We signed up for three years, yeah. We're committed to that and we use our grant dollars for that and the state is fine with it. But it's a ten thou, you get a ta, you know, table, you can get as many tables as we want. They put us in the hallway and we're by the bar and we're by restrooms in a restaurant, so we're in a really good place. Um, you know, logistically we are in the center of, of the event. And yes, they are expensive. That is our most expensive show. Other than that, we're in Boston and it's thirty-three hundred dollars.
So to clarify that, it's ten thousand a year for three years, you're committed.
Mm-hmm.
So it's thirty thousand.
Yes, we are. And that's through our grant, we were, we pay for that. Because with the grant, you have to, you can't have a middle guy. You just show the grant receipt that we paid that. So we now have a ten thousand dollar, um, for ten days, um, to be at the show. And, uh, yes, it's the one of our longer shows. It's a ten-day show.
It's a ten-day show.
Yeah, it's, um.
And you have to man it every day?
Oh, yes. And it's ten and twelve hour days, ten and twelve hour.
You've got to pay the people after you've given the ten thousand dollar.
That's why I try to keep my staff there, volunteers.
Room and board and.
Well, we don't stay overnight. We keep, we keep it every day, a different team. And they go home at the end of the day, they can continue and see the show or come.
And are the different participating municipalities sending people to help you cover that ten-day period?
Well, they love that show. So we are having, we don't have as much trouble. A little tougher to send them out to Harrisburg or shuffle off to Buffalo, but they definitely, we are finding, especially if it's a six-hour shift and they have a ticket and they can spend the rest of the, or the early part of the day or the rest of the evening, um, at the show.
When you, you're talking about the, the tiers, a ten thousand dollar full partner, five thousand dollar, I guess, half, and then a twenty-five hundred and twelve shows. So how's it tiered? Do you pick the shows you want to go to as a municipality or, so, and you just pick them? All, it doesn't like automatically, everybody gets the Philadelphia Flower Show?
Ten thousand dollar rate, everybody gets every show.
So ten thousand, you go to every. So if you're at five thousand dollars, which what, we were at Stone Harbor, but with the chamber. So then we pick.
You can pick the show.
Six shows that we want to go to.
Yes.
Physically be at. I mean, yeah, does it mean you're physically at them or your materials are at them?
Your material is at them, but you can certainly volunteer.
Okay, so your materials are at six shows.
And we were, we were working with, you know, the Flower Show because of the expense, that we would take that out and make it special. But now that we get the cooperative marketing grant, which is basically, you know, comes back to us from occupancy tax, we're including that because it's such an important show for this area. And, and they just market to all of our customers. So it's important that, you know, if you want to be there. But there's a little more to it, you know, can you do a, you know, be at the booth, can you, you know, work a shift?
Okay.
You know, help promote the entire county.
How long did, so that's a ten-day show. How, how about the other smaller ones like Harrisburg? Is there, are they weekends?
Harrisburg is also, it's like a nine-day show.
Wow, that's long.
There's two weekends and then in the middle.
Okay.
In Harrisburg, it's a outdoor show. And in Harrisburg, on the Wednesday of that show, the schools are closed. So all the families and, you know, children can go to the show. You know, that's how big of a show that is in Harrisburg. Um, we have, uh, you know, in Connecticut, we're at the Northeast RV, an outdoor show and that's the nineteenth to the twenty-second of this month. So there can be like a long weekend. We leave on a Thursday, you're setting up an opening on Friday, Saturday, Sunday and you're coming home either Sunday night, depending how far you are or else the next morning.
If no one is physically at these shows and just the materials, how do you know that it's really being handed out?
Because someone from our office is at every show.
Oh, someone is at every show.
Someone that aren't from our office. Only because if there's any kind of questions, we're there to answer. But definitely to make sure, and we do have, you know, training and make sure that everyone who goes knows that they need to be promoting every place. That's why it's a little difficult to get an individual business owner because they certainly, you know, human nature, they want to promote their own business. That's why we look more at, you know, the tourism organizations and chambers and all to help us, um, man the booth. But we always have somebody from our office. There are four people on one of them that will attend the shows. Um, and make sure that everybody is equally represented. And often, it's not about pushing and a lot of their people know where they want to be, you know? And then we can say, hey, well, if you're here, you can go visit this, you know, and go to the other attractions. But yeah, I'll be going to shows. It's getting old.
After forty-three years.
Yeah.
So question, how, if budgets are not being approved and, but the shows have started?
Right.
So how is that happening?
Well, we've had some who, who made the commitment at the end of last year. Um, Greater Wildwood did, Cape May did. Um, you know, I paid for all the booths in advance, which is how my budget works. Um, then we look at, like, right now in Cincinnati, a case, Stone Harbor brochures are there. We were able to get them from the State Information Center because we didn't want to go without you. You know, you don't want to go that far and not have everyone represented. So we try to reach out and do the best we can in hopes that, you know, but we do get that commitment. You know, that yes, we're going to be in it or no, we're not. Um, not everybody is budget related, you know, uh, bound. Uh, the Mid-Atlantic Center for the Arts is one that's partnering as well and I didn't mention them. So those organizations pay the dollars upfront. And as we, like you say, I pay for all the booths out of my budget, so they're paid for. So the other expenses, as the dollars come in for the commitment, you know, then we can pay, um, the other cost. So if you're in, you know, whenever your dollars are here, there'll be shows that it'll cover. And, uh, we will be able to, you know, make sure that you see where your dollars are going. But it's an eighty thousand dollar, uh, program and it's, you know, why we're asking.
What did you say was an eighty thousand?
Eighty thousand. By the time we're done, we're at eighty thousand. And, uh, you know, it's a matter of getting our message out.
Is this the first time you're in Cincinnati?
This is, it'll be our third year.
And you, have you truly had people come here from Cincinnati? I mean, that's, I know that area. That's a twelve, thirteen hour.
It's twelve hours.
Drive.
Mm-hmm. And we were, they even go there from Kentucky and come in and drive because they're kind of that mid, edge of the Midwest kind of, they're either going to lakes or if they want to go to beaches, they're coming to ours, they're not going to the west coast. And we're seeing more and more of that.
Yeah, there's no beach. It's lakes.
How do you gauge?
Well, there's that mistake with, by the lake, isn't that Kentucky?
How do you gauge how many people or that people are coming in from Cincinnati? How, you know?
Because that's when at the end of the year, we get all of our partners to come in to give us their analytics to tell us either through zip codes or, you know, their information of where they're sending their information, reservations. Um, the Cape May City is very good. The Chamber is very good at getting that information. Uh, Greater Wildwood, their, with Tita, um, also is able to say, okay. We, our reports from our businesses are saying that, you know, the Ohio, Connecticut was another one that we started to see more and more based on the data we were getting from, from our partners after the shows.
On a local level, do you have any, um, indication that Stone Harbor is seeing Cincinnati people or Connecticut?
Your businesses would have to tell us if they're seeing anyone from, from Ohio. But, you know, I would say, you know, hotels like, um, The Reeds might be able to have that information. Uh, real estate offices might have that information. I mean, that's, you know, they're the ones who keep track of where the visitor's coming from. And, you know, what is the number? But if they're, if, if you're not seeing impact from Cincinnati, you don't have to be there. But those who are, you know, will choose to go there. If you're a full partner, your stuff will, will be going to that. But you may find more value in the Boston show or the Connecticut show that maybe other towns don't. So it becomes part of, you know, how does this best impact, you know, all the municipalities and all the resorts in the county? You know, how do we make that, you know, balance that says, okay, you know, this will grow tourism to the entire county?
Diane, not, just to back up a little bit, have you ever contacted the Board of Realtors and asked all the real estate companies for their demographics of where?
We have worked with the Board.
They have attracted people?
Uh, yes, we have.
Because every realtor knows where their renters are coming from.
Right, yeah.
I mean, that's just a button you push and they can tell you that.
And that's what we.
And I don't think they're Cincinnati.
Well, and that may not be for, for your, you know, municipality, but it might be, you know, for, for the Wildwoods or Cape May. But that's how we started also Washington DC is another one that we didn't think, mostly people travel south to go on vacation. We're starting to see some of that northern Virginia, DC, Baltimore, where they're traveling to our area. Sometimes it's easier to get, believe it or not, we complain about Route forty-seven and fifty-five, but often it's easier for, um, Virginia, Delaware, Maryland to come.
Or if somebody goes to, from Cincinnati goes to Wildwood and then they take their day trip to Stone Harbor.
Exactly, yeah.
As you're kind of figuring people are moving around the county. So although we may not see the Cincinnati zip code show up here specifically, they're showing up within Cape May County and X percentage of people who come to Cape May County then start doing their day trips. Cape May, Stone Harbor, Ocean City, wherever they're going.
You're doing, like, just ten-question, uh, survey at each of the shows to say, you know, do, where do you go? You know, where, where's your destination, you know, that you end up in to Cape May County? Where else do you go? Those kind of things. We can get a better idea of, you know, our whole thing is you got to move people around. And the more you give them to do, the longer they're going to stay. The further they drive, the longer they stay and it's all about the overnights and what they're going to spend, you know, per day when they stay overnight.
I definitely understand the Washington, Virginia, we've seen a big influx. But Cincinnati is a different market economically.
We were surprised.
Than all Boston or Connecticut or Washington or Virginia. So I'm quite shocked and be very surprised if that many would come to pay that type of money to go to that show. I mean.
Right, then that would be a show if we didn't think it was a demographic that we're drawing from, then we would, we wouldn't choose to participate in that show.
Yeah, that's, that's why we try to make it a broad, uh, base destination. You know, where are they coming from and how do we better attract and grow the visitor? And Connecticut was a perfect example, Boston as well.
Yeah, it's a good.
And we started hearing from businesses that, you know, they're American Express. Charges were showing up coming from Boston, how'd that happen? You know, one thing is that the Spirit Air was, had flights from there, but also we were working that Boston market to, you know, grow that, to have them come to Cape May County.
I think, I think it's, I think it's very difficult to get quantified data on how many people are going where because of a brochure. I think we've all, you know, in the past, we've all been given customer surveys to fill out. And one of the questions is always, how did you hear about us? Does anybody ever fill that out? I don't think I've ever filled one of those out. It goes right in the trash can.
We try to give people a little, you know, tchotchke or something. If you fill that out, you get this beautiful pen.
So we're in a position that we, we, we basically don't know. We, you know, we could argue that we don't know if this is doing us any good. Or you could also argue, we don't know how much good it is doing us. Don't know. I hate to be, I understand about taxpayers, uh, safeguarding taxpayers' dollars, but I hate to be in a position that, and I'm not one to say that, well, we have to do this or, or look what Woodbine's doing. We cannot, you know, we have to do it because Woodbine's doing it or any of the other communities. But this is a case where we're letting, we appear to be letting or be content maybe to let other towns carry the load for us. And I don't really like that idea. Uh, I think we all need to participate. It's one for all and all for one here, I think. Um, it's not that, I don't know what figure you're talking about. I, I don't think Cincinnati's where we want to go. I think we want to really stick with, uh, Washington, Baltimore, Philadelphia, and New York. But then again, I am not a marketer. They're just my thoughts. You know, I'd hate to miss out on the opportunity. It's not that many dollars. Uh, and like I said, I, you know, we'd. And like I said, I, you know, we don't know what good it's doing us, just like we don't know if it's, if we're wasting our money on this. It's a chance I don't know that we want to take.
Well, I, I tend to agree with a lot of your thoughts, Ray. And we do get a lot of free publicity through the newspapers, Philadelphia Inquirer and things like that. But that said, our surrounding communities are participating. I, from an accounting standpoint, always want to see what is the bang my buck is getting. I want to know in some way, how is this helping us? Do we already have the traffic based on everything else? And is this necessary? But at the same token, if the surrounding communities are participating, we'd be odd man out, not always a good reason to spend taxpayers' money. But in this case, we can't really prove that it's helping us, and we can't prove that it's hurting us. I think the, I would defer to the Chair of Recreation Tourism, if we do decide to do this, to select the areas in which we want to market this, if that's what the Council decides to do.
I, I don't think any of us want to be the odd man out. I think we all want to participate, but I think, like Karen said.
Right.
I think, like Karen said, we want to be more selective at what market we want to be in. But I definitely think with, we have to support our surrounding communities, absolutely.
Well, I, again, I don't think it hurts if we end up in Cincinnati, and that's part of it. It doesn't hurt us to be marketed there, as long as it's not somehow precluding us from a market where we might do better. So if it's a matter of, that's included already, so be it. It doesn't hurt. There's, there's people in Cincinnati that can afford to come here. But that aside, I look at this from a completely different perspective. I think we don't need analytics. Jill, how much did we budget for this, for this year? Twenty-five hundred dollars?
Yes.
We're talking about twenty-five hundred dollars.
Plus, plus, plus the brochures. Plus the brochures.
What?
That's why you have to be selective of your markets.
For an organization that distributes over nearly three-quarters of a million pieces of marketing material, that's unheard of, and I don't need analytics to make that decision. If, if this was twenty-five thousand or two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, I'm going to need them. But this is, this is, we're getting way more than what we should be doing here.
But we have to be selective on the market.
I agree.
Because our, our brochures are costly.
Absolutely.
So you, you can't just say it's twenty-five hundred, it's whatever the brochures cost. And why put them in a market that's not going to?
Right. The other issue is, we're not paying for it alone, so since the Chamber is half.
Right.
They pay the twenty-five hundred, but do they pay for the brochures?
Then I guess they have their brochures, because we have ours, then they have theirs.
Is that right?
Last year, we shared the cost of an eight-page brochure together. So we did share the cost of that.
So it was a shared cost of five thousand dollars, split twenty-five hundred, and a shared cost of five thousand dollars, split the cost of brochures, or roughly in that neighborhood?
It was twenty-two eighty-two.
Twenty-two eighty-two per organization?
So it's under five.
So it was just under, it was just under ten thousand for the entire, between the two organizations?
For the borough, though.
Under five thousand for the borough?
For the borough.
Okay.
Again, still, that's in that realm where you're being represented with, with the other municipalities along the coastline here. I think we're foolish to not take advantage of that.
Okay. Well, in the interest of time, thank you. Diane, does anybody have any other questions for Diane? The Chamber wanted, the Chamber's been asking us what they need to budget to decide what they're going to do, and before they can make a decision, we have to make a decision, and that's the reason why they asked that, you know, we just get some more information. So that being said, it goes back to beach and, or recreation and tourism from here?
Do you want to take a consensus of opinion for the Chair, or not?
I mean, we can, but we can, you know, everybody can pretty much has voiced their opinions, I think.
The decision that's going to be made at Public Works, we don't go around the table and see what we think about.
So the final decision will be made at Beach Rec and Tourism? Is that what you're saying?
No, it'll be made.
Go, it'll be, well, I think here that you have a general consensus. I think you know how people feel. Would you, would you, you know, do you think that you have enough information from all of us to know what, which way you'd lean, shall we say?
Which way I lean, or which way we lean?
We lean, the, the beach and rec.
Well, I think everybody has spoken up.
Beach and tourism.
Rec and tourism.
Josie?
I'm just confused, because we did discuss this last fall, and I thought that this was not going forward. That's why I'm confused, because we.
I thought it was in the budget, and then all of a sudden, it was said it, the, was, I was told that it was not in the budget, but it was in the budget as presented. So I kind of didn't understand where the, it was out came from.
It is in the budget, because we did apply for the grant, and it was a condition of the grant, so our share had to be budgeted. So presently, it is accounted for in the 2018 budget.
I didn't know.
We just didn't get the grant.
So we didn't get the grant?
No, but they have appealed it, we haven't gotten an answer on whether or not we've received that.
So what is the timeframe for this?
So.
So, okay, so it's in the budget for 2018, and it has no effect from 2017 to 2018. Is, is it the budget flat presently for tourism?
Yes, it's a little.
So it was flat?
Correct.
So.
I mean, ideally, I'd like to get an answer to the Chamber, because that's what they're looking for, some direction.
Miranda, may I ask you how many workdays you ended up spending last year at the trade shows?
It wasn't many, so, um, we did travel to DC, which I believe I missed one day, because I think, and Marnie can correct me, did we miss a Friday? I think we traveled on a Friday, and the show was Saturday and Sunday. And then Harrisburg, same thing, I think I traveled on a Friday, and the show was Saturday, Sunday. And the other one was the AC Boat Show, but I don't remember missing a day of work.
That was a weekend.
It was a weekend day.
Who didn't miss any work at all?
Mm-hmm. So we select, and based on the show rundown, that's what the committee decided, where our markets were best, you know, where it best suited us to an harbor to focus our attention to promote. So again, we could look at the list and see if it's just a weekend show, then I wouldn't be missing, you know, too much work in the office.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
However, one could say you didn't miss any, because you are the Tourism Director.
Right.
True.
Correct? We could really. So, again, Counsel, what's your, what's your pleasure?
Well, I agree with Charles, if, if Marnie is waiting for the Chamber, and they have to budget, we need to have some kind of decision.
Agreed.
Well, if you're waiting for Rec and Tourism to make the decision, the decision has been made.
That you do, that it is in the budget or is not?
That it is not.
So, giving some counsel here. So, how about if the majority feels it is a worthwhile project?
Majority rolls, sorry.
Does the majority feel it's a worthwhile project?
Well, I, I, I mean, I, you know, we, we have these, we, we have committees, right? Okay, and we have committee meetings, where there's a Chair and two other Council people. I was never under the impression that the committee makes the final decision.
Right.
It come, all these, these kind of decisions, I think, would come to Counsel. It's like the fireman stipend. We thought that was a great idea, but it came to Counsel. I, I don't expect a committee to make a decision that holds all of us to that decision, unless it's something very, very minor, that doesn't really, you know, like, what color the sign should be, or something, you know? So I would think that we, I mean, can we, can we vote, can we take a vote on this now, or?
Jill, isn't that a recommendation, a recommendation from the committee to the Counsel? Isn't that how it is?
Yeah, I would say yes.
Well, last year, we didn't vote on it. Last year, count, the committee decided that we would go forward with it. You did not vote on that.
And that's true.
Correct, it was, right.
That is true.
And it was put into the budget. Right. Therefore.
Right, and that is true.
Someone approved it through the budget.
And it is, and, and then it came in the budget this year.
We did vote on it as part of the budget.
We did vote on it as part of the budget last year, is what the solicitor is saying. That being said, when, when things come to, this is just my feeling, when things come to our attention, that somebody says, hey, and the Chamber said, hey, guys, um, we have a, a decision hasn't been made yet on this, and we can't, we need to know, and you go to Jill, and Jill says, well, no, the committee's saying no. And then somebody else on Counsel's like, well, I don't know that I agree with that decision, let's discuss it. I think it's something that happens, and that's what happened here. So rather than say, two people have made this decision, and it's done, at any time, any one of us can say, hey, I want to talk about this, I don't agree with that. What do you know? I want more information. And I think that's what took place with this particular topic. So now that being said, I think that we're looking at a majority would like to participate with the county in this. So I'm leaning towards we participate, because I'm looking like we have the majority want to. So now, do I have to say, does the majority agree that what I'm saying is the majority? You know what I mean? Like, we got to. So would a, would a vote be appropriate at this time?
You can take a vote if you want.
What do we need, you tell me what to do.
To participate as budgeted.
The motion would be to participate in the, what?
In the, in the Cape May County Travel Show Cooperative.
Can we do that in a work session?
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Can we, can we take action in a work session?
Mark just said, yeah.
Normally, you take action at the regular meeting.
Right.
You haven't taken action at the work session.
So we could bring it forward.
You want to?
We could bring it forward in the regular meeting, or we could bring it forward in two weeks. Bring it forward in, we'll bring it forward in the regular meeting as a motion, because we cannot, we can't make decisions in the work session, so we will do that. Okay. And I apologize, Natural Resources, for cutting your time. So, Natural Resources.
Dr. Desco, short and sweet.
Good afternoon. I hope that doesn't imply that I'm not short or sweet.
You're both.
Happy New Year, everyone, and I'm just going to report a few kind of reminders of what we did in 2017, in a short and sweet way. Starting with Stone Harbor Point, we did renegotiate the non-emergency essential vehicle use policy, which allows us to have vehicles down on the beach during the non-vehicle timeframe. That was a fairly large accomplishment, working with U.S. Fish and Wildlife, New Jersey DEP, Endangered Non-Gated Species Program, working with law enforcement and, and the Wetlands Institute, kind of manage that, and how we got vehicles back and forth. That's in place now for another two years, actually one more year going forward, and I suspect at that point, we'll just be in a kind of simple renewal process. The first one was kind of a landmark deal. The Beach Stewards, I presented a report on the Beach Stewart Program. I do have a more formal report, if you would like that to be distributed. But a reminder, we worked with the Borough last year as the Wetlands Institute, and we had a very successful program. That program was designed to reduce disturbance to beach nesting birds while providing educational information to the public about the role of the conservation area. At the point, there were six stewards that were present on the beach from Memorial Day to Labor Day. There was more than five hundred steward hours down there, they were present seven days a week. The other important component is those stewards provided the escorts to the police vehicles as part of that, to allow the patrols to occur down, down at the points. That was kind of an inter, interlinked component. In all, they engaged three hundred and eighteen visitors and reported a hundred and eighteen incidents. We did see a decrease from prior year in the overall number of incidents and how they were occurring, so we feel like that was a very successful program, and I be, I believe that program is up for discussion later. We did two different, two beach sweeps occurred at the point, and along all the beaches this year, one in the spring and one in the fall. That was with the Borough, the Wetlands Institute, and the Stone Harbor POA participated in doing that. It's an ongoing program, and will continue again in 2018. Regarding the Bird Sanctuary, and I kind of now have in the Wildflower Meadow, as you all know, we had a great success getting the Wildflower Meadow in. It was a great achievement, a lot of community participation, it really worked great overall. You know that it was formally registered as a Monarch Way Station this year, and we have the signs in hand, they'll go up as soon as the ground isn't frozen solid. It's kind of a timing thing. Overall, the Bird Sanctuary, the gardens are doing very well. We seem to have that down now on a schedule for overall maintenance of the gardens, that includes some plant replacements as needed. We're in the process of replacing signage out there, trail signage, some are under design right now, and it was kind of a three, a rotation, we'll get some more on in the fall, and then some more in, in 2019. The pump house is slated to have a mural repainted. The mural on the pump house is slated to be repainted this spring, and that'll just kind of spruce that up. Two other notable items, the brick program was retired in 2017, as was the heron cam, kind of a cost-saving effectiveness kind of analysis there. We continued invasive plant management in 2017, with work with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service was out there, working with Public Works, and the Clean Shores Program was out, and that'll be ongoing, kind of twice a year maintenance. We are making good progress out there, but that's kind of just an ongoing thing. I don't see us saying the day we're done managing that. The docent-led tours were run by naturalists from the Wetlands Institute, again, in 2017. They go from about June fourth to August twenty-seventh, on Saturdays and Sundays. The numbers were up in 2016, we had a hundred and ninety-six people participate in those tours, and last year, we had two hundred and sixty-four. So that was a nice jump there. And again, the 2018 docent tours are part of a professional services agreement that you'll be considering a little bit. Overall, kind of a side note, we did, as part of the plantings in both the sanctuary and the meadow, we spent a lot of time making sure we had milkweed planted out there to help monarchs. The state of New Jersey passed a law two weeks ago, requiring milkweed plantings in public grounds, so kind of an interesting thing. We're waiting to see how that plays out, but it, it's at the state level now that they're trying to make some moves there. So we're way ahead of the game on that, and monarch numbers overall are up. And we're waiting for some reports on Mexico. We'll see if we get any of our tag guys from here end up down there. The last thing I want to talk about is the Dune Vegetation Management Plan. That was a really heavy lift for Natural Resources in 2017. We got the plan approved by Counsel. The first project was successfully installed. We had the first reporting done, that, that those plantings require repetitive monitoring to make sure we have survival and success of the plantings. The first monitoring came in, and we have a very high success rate for survival. There'll be continued monitoring there, but there's no, no need to do any replanting at this point in time. And LOMAX Consulting surveyed Japanese Black Pine distribution in the dunes throughout, throughout the Borough, made a report about that. One of the areas they identified was the area between eighty and eighty-third, especially eighty-second and eighty-third, and Natural Resources got a proposal from LOMAX in terms of what it would take to do another project there, and we're in the process of looking for community partners to see if that's a project that'll move forward in 2018. So that's kind of on the docket of things we're thinking about in 2018. Of course, you know that we all think this is a wonderful town, from a Natural Resources perspective, but I'm going to say there's always more we can do to make the seashore a better place for wildlife, and for the notion that we can work more and more to have people share the resource with the wildlife that's here, that makes this a special place, and we hope to continue to do that through educational programs, and just getting people to really appreciate and notice what a wonderful place this really is. Happy to take any questions, and I have a minute.
Do your docents ask where people come from?
Uh, we actually do. We actually do have a little bit of information about that, so, so yes.
So maybe that's something that we can get some kind of a feel.
That could be.
For, to get something concrete because it's a situation, someone used a real quick tally.
Yeah, and we, the Wetlands Institute is speaking separately now. We do have some information about where folks come and come from, and some of the interesting things, we do see, I hate to say, we, we did see an uptick in, in Ohio.
Did you?
And it's, it's folks coming for the, the birding festivals. They, they know about those festivals, and that's where they're, they're coming in.
And they know about this area.
How they know about that, I don't know, but we.
The travel shows.
We do it through, we do it from, from analytics associated with keyword searches. And they're, they're keen in on horseshoe crabs and things like that, so. So we do have a little bit of that.
So you do have some, good.
We do have a little bit, but I will throw in, we did decrease our rack card distributions from over 75,000 a year. We're under, we're under about 35,000, and we're seeing no change in our visitorship. So we made some decisions to move.
On how to reach folks.
And frankly, we have a sustainability initiative, so it's kind of hard to print 75,000 pieces of paper.
True. Just to add to that, I think you covered a lot of the things that I was going to say, so thank you very much. We did have a Natural Resource Meeting on Thursday, January 11th, and we had good attendance. Jill was there, Mark de Blasio, Lenore, Joan Kramer, what's your name? Ray Parsick. We were all there, and we went over a lot of the things that Lenore just shared. We also went over, after discussion, and approved the professional contract that we're going to, that is on the agenda tonight for 2018 with the Wetlands. And we also discussed and approved the agreement that is on the agenda for Stockton for the Woodershed Management Plan. And after that, we did have our first flood mitigation meeting, which we spent most of the time discussing all the various topics and projects that we will need to be addressing for the future. It was a crazy good beginning to establishing the process and the plans that we need to do for the future for flood mitigation. And I do know that Jill is presently working on planning another meeting.
Correct.
Ta-da. How was that?
Good job.
Short, sweet.
The only one item left on the work session is the Marine Mammal Stranding Center, and that was my topic. And it does not, it just was something that I was asked if Counsel would consider. And it is the, one of the gentlemen on the Board of Directors for the Marine Mammal Stranding Center, his name is Ken Schaefer, he approached me and he said that Harvey Cedars is including a little box on their beach tag forms that they mail out, saying, would you like to make a one-time donation to the Marine Mammal Stranding Center for whatever they would do, maybe $5, $1, whatever. And this individual, Mr. Schaefer, asked if I would bring it to our Counsel, if it's something that you would entertain doing. The Marine Mammal Stranding Center, we did hear some about them. They are fully donation funded, no taxpayer-based funding whatsoever.